Get them trained.
Okay, project, project. Say it on key.
All right, folks, our little light is on to say that we are ready to roll. And I want to welcome all of you this evening. So I'll call the meeting to order. Would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary, roll call please.
Coulson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
Here.
All right, and we have a special presentation this evening. So Chief Latanzio, would you like to come forward and present the awards?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and members of the community. Tonight is my honor to recognize two of our officers tonight for a life-saving award. I would like to have Officer Claussen and Officer McBride come up here. On July 27th, a female caller reported an intoxicated male had just cut his wrist and was bleeding. The caller further reported the male was going in and out of consciousness. Officers McBride and Claussen responded to the scene and arrived prior to the arrival of the fire department. They found the male lying on his back in the driveway of his residence. The caller was applying pressure to his left arm to slow the blood loss. They observed the male had a significant laceration to his left arm and a pool of blood was forming. The caller reported the male had used a large kitchen knife to slice his arm. While Officer McBride placed direct pressure on the subject's wound, Officer Claussen retrieved Officer McBride's personal tourniquet from his patrol car. Both officers worked together to apply the tourniquet to the subject's upper-left arm to slow the bleeding, and it was successful. The firefighters stated the officers had done a great job with the tourniquet and saved the man's life. I would like to congratulate both the officers. Thank you. Here's a plaque for Officer Joe Claussen, and it says honoring his humane action for applying direct pressure and a tourniquet on a citizen who suffered a severe, suffered a serious self-inflicted laceration to his arm. Joe's quick actions and knowledge of first aid training saved a life. Congratulations.
Got it.
Got it. And this, switch. And the next one here is for Officer Scott McBride, honoring his humane action for applying direct pressure and a tourniquet on a citizen who suffered a serious self-inflicted laceration to his arm. Scott's quick actions and knowledge of first aid training saved a life. Congratulations.
Quiet. Thank you. Want to give one?
How about that?
Whoa. No peeking in between your shoulders.
Really trust Sergeant Parker to be the photographer?
This is only kind of good to tell them once a week.
Yeah. Wow, that is just one, yep, that is wonderful. So, thank you so much. We're really proud of our officers, and boy, you just never know what comes around that corner on every call that you get. So, it's amazing, and we're really proud of you, and thank you so much, and for the families too involved, so, so thank you. So, thank you. Okay. All right, and next we have a couple proclamations to read. This one is Giving Tuesday for December 1st, 2015. Whereas Giving Tuesday has been established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, and whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism where people give whatever they are able to give. And whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people. And whereas it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday and on every day to recognize a tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in Albany. And whereas Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout the holiday season and all other times of year. Now therefore, I Sharon Canopin, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim December 1st, 2015 as Giving Tuesday in the City of Albany, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. And witness whereof, I here on two set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this fourth day of November 2015. Okay, all right, and that's a new proclamation that had come to us. And our next one is a proclamation that we have had for several years now. We're very proud of this and all the Albany efforts that are put in to this fundraiser. But this is the Albany Charitable Toy Run, December 6, 2015. Whereas the Association for Motorcyclists of Oregon has been sponsoring a toy run since 1984 to gather together members of motorcycle groups, car clubs, and interested individuals to provide toys to needy families. And whereas there are families with children in the Albany area that will not enjoy full Christmas due to financial hardship. And whereas a group of people continuing the tradition of having the annual toy run because of all the good work and fellowship. And whereas businesses and groups around the area help to sponsor the toy run, such as the Fraternal Order of Eagles 225 Airee, Walmart Road Maggots, Christian Motorcycle Riders, and the Cutting Room. And whereas on December 6, 2015, the toy run and parade will again be conducted with the gathering at the Walmart parking lot and ride to the Eagles Airee for gift distribution and lunch. Now therefore, I Sharon Canopin, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim December 6, 2015 as the Albany Charitable Toy Run Day. And urge all citizens of Albany to recognize that day as a time of sharing and giving by motorcyclists and others to be aware of their motorcycles on our streets and highways while they ride to provide a happier holiday season to families and children. And witness whereof, I here on two set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this fourth day of November 2015. Okay, all right. Bill, did you want to say a few words this year about the upcoming toy run? Do you have as many motorcycle groups involved this year?
Yeah, the AMO, because of a lack of participation, folded. But there's still a half a dozen of us that are, were members that continue to do this. And, and it's one of the things that, and Sharon can vouch for this, it is soul-moving to see all these kids come up and get a toy. They get to get a toy for their own self, out of a group. I mean, we'll have hundreds of toys sitting up there. This year, one of the things we're doing a little bit different is we're going, what toys that don't get given out that night are going to be donated to the Salvation Army for their toy run. And we, years ago, Kmart was where we started, and it was just a very short trip down Salem Road to the Eagles. Well, when Kmart folded, we had to find a place that, where a lot of bikers, a lot of times, they'll go to the store where we're going to be at and buy a toy, and then we've got a truck that takes the toys. So we ended up at Walmart. And to avoid streets that are associated with the state, our toy run parade, and it's now 10 miles long, it goes from Walmart to Knox Butte, down Knox Butte to Century Drive, Century Drive, up to the underpass at Millersburg, Millersburg over to Salem Road, and then Salem Road down to Main, and eventually down to the Eagles. So, and the guys are loving it. They're saying, finally, we get a ride out of it.
Yeah, that's true.
So, anybody that is interested in donating a toy can do so either at the Cutting Room, which is one of their sponsors, or at Walmart. During the time of the parade, the parade starts at 10, people start showing up at 10 o'clock, the parade will start at 11, and, or they can do it at the Eagles. So if you are in wanting to provide a toy for somebody, we're welcome to you to do it, so.
Wonderful.
And we get a great response from, the City of Albany, by the way, you guys do a great job of helping us out with the fire department, the police, and the public works. So, we thank you.
Yeah, oh, we thank you, yeah. Do you want me to bring the proclamation with me that day, or do you want to take it?
You can do it, you can bring it with you.
Okay, okay, will do. All right.
Thank you, Sharon.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Madam Mayor, I was just going to ask, Bill, were these, was there a special date that the toys needed to be there, like say if you take them to the Cutting Room, is there a cutoff date so that you can get everything together?
I'm sorry?
Is there a cutoff date that?
Oh, no, you can take it to the Eagles.
Okay.
They'll, they'll have a box there.
All right.
And as far as the.
Okay.
Or on the Sunday the 6th.
Okay, that sounds great, thank you.
Yeah, Cutting Room's wonderful. Dave and Rhonda, they, I think it was a couple years ago, ended up having way more kids than they thought, and boy, they just went, rushed off to the store and bought a whole bunch of more toys and brought it back. So they're just wonderful in the community, so we appreciate it. Okay, thank you, Bill. Okay, next for scheduled business is business from the public. Is there anyone that would like to bring an item forward this evening? So, okay. Was there, or, okay. Did you want to, Scott, or? I see Linda back there like, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't want to talk.
I have a feeling you're being pushed into this, huh?
Yes, yes, this would be the time, anything that's on the agenda. So you'll just need to state your name and address. My name is Scott Lawley, and I live at 175 Foxwood Court in the Second Ward, I believe. And I work as a database analyst for the Garden Cascades West Council Governments. And I have a letter that I wrote to the Democrat Herald. It was published October 15th of this year, and I'll just read it for the record. It's very short. "The Albany City Council is in the process of deciding whether to gut the city ordinance which sets aside 1% of new building costs for public art. In adopting this ordinance years ago, the leaders of Albany created a vision of Albany as a vibrant and engaging place where people want to live. At the time, the vision was that public art would help Albany develop as a place where people flourish and feel pride in your community. Public art is a minor investment, but an important one. People come to a city that is forward-looking, and Albany is proud of its rich heritage of pioneer spirit, annual cultural events, where medals, research, industry, and natural resources. Because of its location and unique position, I believe Albany has a great unmet potential for becoming a major player in the Mid Willamette Valley. The council is on the verge of turning the backs on an important window of opportunity and eliminating the intent of the original ordinance. Art should be an integral part of the city's commitment to public life, places that make this investment thrive. I urge the council to reconsider its proposal to change 1% ordinance, and I encourage people who care about Albany, let the leaders know how they feel about the future of Albany." And refer to this meeting today. And it's signed Scott Lawley, member of the Albany Arts Commission, stated Albany October 15th.
All right, all right, thank you, thank you, Scott. Anyone else from business from the public? Yep, Linda.
My name is Linda Hurd. I am the Chair of the Albany Arts Commission, and I live at 723 Ferry Street Southwest in Albany, which is a house that's sort of famous for where Catherine Buick used to live, if you had her for English. I don't know her, didn't know her, but anyway. It seems to me that ordinance number 5385, which provides the 1% of construction costs, is actually working so far, and there doesn't seem to be a real reason to change it. We haven't received any bids for these two projects, so we don't know what the costs are going to be. And the opportunity for Albany to acquire public art doesn't really present itself that often. We don't, I mean, I think we've only done it twice, as far as I know. And the idea of relying on public, of private investment for public art is a really nice idea, but we can maybe tap those coffers a little too often. I mean, there are a lot of other things that need the money, and by having privately-funded public art, what we do is lose the opportunity to have an oversight of what that art is. And it opens ourselves to having art in the public realm that may not be appropriate for Albany, or may not speak to what we think represents Albany. We've talked previously about how the Arts Commission would like to tell the Albany story and the history of Albany, where we've been, where we are now, and where we're going. And by allowing people to put other art here without having that oversight, if it's not on city property, we have no guidance from the Arts Commission. We can't regulate, for example, the can-can dancers on the building on First and Ferry, or the Icarus that's on the wall of a building on First Avenue. As nice as they may or may not be, the city has no say in that. And to me, that's public art, and I think it's important for the city to have something to say about it. So I'd say let's keep the 1%, or we start saying that we have oversight on any public art that gets on any private property, which you know isn't going to happen. So, those are my comments, and I thank you very much for your consideration.
All right, thank you, Linda. You're welcome. So thank you and the Arts Commission too for all your lovely work you do. So, yeah, we sure enjoy all the art, rotating art in City Hall. It's just, it's really fun to see, you know, each month.
I quickly say, off, not on record, but in December, we're having an exhibition of live.
Oh, wow.
Live, just amazing art. Artists from all over, all over New York, bringing in glass fish, quilts, pillows, and handbags.
Oh, wow.
And antiques, family poles, and we're going to have fly fishing demonstrations.
Oh, my gosh, wow, all that is just one, that's very creative, too. Yeah, thank you, Linda. Anyone else from business from the public? So, yes, sir.
Uh-huh, yes. Michael, yeah.
Excuse me. My name is Michael Moore. I live at 601 Northeast Peachtree Lane in North Albany, and I'm a former member of the Albany Arts Commission. I think I'll sit down, too, I get closer to the microphone that way. My old bones can rest. And one thing, well, a couple of things that disturb me about this proposed change. One is to take away the 1% and make it 1/4%, which amounts to hardly anything. If you look at a $500,000 building, 1/4% I believe would be $1,250. Correct me if I'm wrong. That's not any amount of money that'll go towards anything substantial in the way of art. I was involved in the selection of the Library Girl at the main library, and also the big mural inside the library, which a lot of people don't like, but it's there. And that was from, from the 1% for art. The other thing that I don't like is that it would be taken, the selection of artwork would be put in your hands, and I don't know that any of you are professional artists, or whether you do that as a hobby, but the Arts Commission members are, for the most part, artists. If they're not artists, they're deeply involved in artwork. And I think that would be the most appropriate body to make a selection on artwork for the city. And the artwork does not have to be placed in buildings. It can be, like Corvallis is a good example, they have statues all over the place, wonderful statues that are, I'm sure, provided for in large part by the 1% art program they have over there. There was a letter to the editor here recently in the Democrat Herald from a gentleman who stated that, what does Albany need more art for? They've got two places that they show artwork. They've got the public library, they've got Albany City Hall. And he raised the question, why is more needed? Why should we spend this money on artwork? Well, that's, that's piddling amount, piddling amount. Artwork could be spread in parks, it could be, there could be statues in our city around, like there on Corvallis, just a number of, a number of things. So, main contention I have is that you shouldn't remove, you shouldn't revise it to only allowing one, from 1/4% to 1% for art, nor should you put it in the hands of the City Council and take it away from the Arts Commission to make those choices. And that's the basis of my argument with you. So I hope you can see to change your ways on this thing and go back, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Michael.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from business from the public? Okay, oh, yes.
My name's Bill Heda. I'm the other half of the North Family.
And both very talented artists.
I live on 601 Northeast Peachtree Lane, and was also on the Arts Commission for a period of time. I spent some time in Albuquerque last year, and I was amazed at the amount of public art that was just in places like parks, public playgrounds, on street corners. It was an amazing amount of art. And on the other end of that, this is a big city, last month or two ago, we were in Ritzville, Washington, which is a one-stop-site, stoplight town, okay? And one restaurant. In front of the new fire station was a beautiful statue. Now, if that little bitty town can put good artwork on the street, I don't see why we can't. The other thing I have to say is, the person who said we had art in the City Hall and in the library, his statement was, we have numerous spots in Albany where the public can see rotating art displays. There are only two. There are no more spots in this town where people can hang their artwork. So just consider that. Do you really want it to be that way? Because I really don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Billie. Okay, anyone else from business from the public? Okay, all right, thank you, folks. Okay, next is reconsideration of the vote of the second, for the vote, which was a three to two, there wasn't enough for action, of second reading of the ordinance. This is on page six. We have discussed this before. This item's been in front of you many times, and, so, Council, what would you like to do with this item?
Would you like me to go ahead with the second reading?
We've already had it, second reading.
Don't think you would have had the second reading if there was not a unanimous vote to read the second time.
We had that for the, there wasn't unanimous on the first, but the second was a three-two vote.
Okay.
Yeah, and Counselor Collins was absent.
They had the second reading, and on the second reading, it passed where it was voted three to two, but it did not pass because of the majority.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think on here was confusing, it's this first reading of ordinance on the agenda, and it should have been on the second. Okay, all right, so, Council, what would you like to do?
I'll move, move for adoption of the resolution. Second.
Okay.
Ordinance, pardon me.
Ordinance, yeah, okay, Rich?
Well, I guess I renew my objection to having one person be the person who brings everybody forward. And if you think it's reasonable that just one person should do it, how would you feel if it was me that was doing that instead of you? I mean, the fact that we are a diverse group means that we will get diverse group people. If you have one person who has, you know, all, we are a compilation of a bunch of things, but we are the one thing that is that compilation. I am not unaware that this is a group of people from a whole bunch of different areas in expertise, but I don't see any reason why we would not be able to take turns making that same thing. The mayor starts, and Ward 1A, and then Ward 2A, and then Ward 3A, and then Ward, et cetera, and work their way through. From that perspective, I am opposed to it.
Okay, all right. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and any more discussion?
I have a question, because we have discussed this before, yes, but can someone give me the, like, the basic change? It sounds like that the mayor would still appoint, no, she would choose, select them, but then the council approves, just like normal, right?
Like many of the other committees, commissions.
That's not true. We all are assigned to have individual selections.
Right.
I mean, if you have whatever, and then that selection from a diverse group comes to the council for ratification.
Yeah.
But it's not one person making all of them in.
Right. The thing that, you know, with all due respect, it won't work the way Rich is proposing. It might, but it'd be a very cumbersome process. And so originally then, the way the bylaws were structured was from the task force for forming the Community Development Commission. Doesn't work that way, the way it's written for an ongoing standing committee. So basically, each commission member now, which they, all of them, would like to not have to be going through a process of being selected individually by each counselor, because the way that would be written, we would get applications for, and for reappointments for this commission. So it would end up being, and the council, who do you decide of which, who to appoint? It would end up being, we would be interviewing applicants for, as a whole body with the council. Or, because what you're suggesting is each member gets to appoint somebody, that works with some of our commissions, like the Public Safety Commission, but this one has different representation because it is the Community Development Commission. So you've got somebody that's a homeless advocate, somebody that's from housing representation, somebody that's from economic development. So you would have to designate each one of those seats to a certain counselor, which none of us are going to be up here, you know, in the same position forever, and say, Rich, if you wanted to have the economic development, well, right now, that's Counselor Olson that is that representation. So would that mean you would be kicking him off and appointing somebody else?
You just do it in turn.
So, so it, the way it's structured, not everyone's going to be here all the time to want to have that certain, you know, appointment for a certain, you know, category you'd be choosing from. And plus, it would end up being applicants coming through, then you're going to have staff having to look at each applicant, okay, I need to make sure that this person is going to be applying for a certain, if it's economic development, oh, and then that's going to be one counselor's choosing then. It is just, it makes a very cumbersome process. And already, the slate of names that will come, you guys get to decide anyway the final vote. So if there's any issue of what names I would bring forward, you would be able to have that final vote, just say the same as our Arts Commission, landmarks, the other commissions on that.
Okay, so how do you, Madam Mayor, how do you get the names? Do you not get applications?
Just like our regular names.
You get applications, applications that you go through, so.
Right, the applications already, the same process that's been going on for years and years, we go out for applications, people apply, and then we fill the positions. And actually, the last few years, we've struggled to fill positions. We've had to seek positions.
Well, that's true, but what I'm saying is.
So this would end up being, you're trying to make, it's, it would prevent some people from wanting to apply for this commission on that, too.
Why? I mean, it wouldn't be any different, really. I mean, because if, if you have, apparently you have applicants for financial. I mean, I, I think we're all kind of smart enough to figure out, okay, is this guy or lady in financial, or is this by their application? So I, I'm kind of with Rich, I'm not exactly sure.
Well, it would just be hard for somebody to be applying for that position, not really knowing, you know, they might want to be on the Community Development Commission, but think, well, I'm a homeless advocate, but that one's not coming up, but maybe they know a certain counselor.
I mean, I, I think we're all kind of smart enough to figure out, okay, is this guy or lady in financial, or is this by their application? So, I, I'm kind of with Rich, I'm not exactly sure.
Well, it would just be hard for somebody to be applying for that position, not really knowing, you know, they might want to be on the Community Development Commission, but think, "Well, I'm a homeless advocate, but that one's not coming up," but maybe they know a certain councillor that they would like, you know, a different councillor to be appointed by. It may, it just makes a very cumbersome process for this. And you still have the final say, just like on the other commissions, the council still has to ratify. And even if you know of somebody, you can always tell me, and as councillors have told me, that so-and-so is applying, you know, you know, they'd really like to get them on a certain committee, so, yeah.
Yeah, I've been working on, on one of the people that's been coming to our meetings, trying to get him involved with committees, just, you know, get an application and something like that. And he owns a bunch, and his family own a bunch of apartment complexes, and actually attended the homeless thing, and I said, "You know, this might be a way to get his feet wet by possibly applying for that, opening on that particular committee." Turns out, there is, there is not a position listed as being open right now, because all the positions are currently filled, and maybe those folks want to continue doing it. But, so, I mentioned it to Sharon, said, "Here's a possible candidate to consider, so if we find somebody that we think would be good for any one of those particular positions, recommend her, him or her." I have no problem with that at all.
And we currently have three members that are running on expired terms, and we have three more terms, three more seats coming up at the end of this year or two. So, they've been, the commission has been, keep asking, "Are we, you know, still going to be in this position or not?" And they're a very, very dedicated group, so, and most of them were there from the original appointments that were done, too, from the beginning.
And how long, I mean, how long have some of their terms been? You said from the beginning?
This is, this is our newest commission. This is, remember, it was from the, this, what, two years now, I think we've had it?
I think some of the appointments are actually overdue, aren't they?
Yeah, three from last, three have expired from last year. So, that's why this has been on our plate ever since last February.
It was a mistake.
Okay, any more? We've got a motion on the table in a second. Any more comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried for two. All right, thank you, council.
Only one was like it.
And so, let's see, no, the first reading, I was looking at the wrong one, Jim, so that was the second reading. So, so, now we have first reading of ordinance, and this is on page eight, this is the art ordinance. So, would the council like this ordinance read first time?
I'll move for the ordinance.
Okay.
This is an ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, Chapter 2.96, concerning the acquisition of art for new city buildings.
I would move that the ordinance be read second time.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
No.
Okay, all right. So, since there's a no for the first reading, then that means this will be held over to the next meeting for the second reading, and then there'll be a vote, vote on ordinance. Okay?
May I just like to speak to some of the comments that were made? I, for one, have been concerned, not necessarily about the one percent in, in and of itself, but what I'm concerned about is that it's the council that has ultimate responsibility to meet the fiduciary responsibilities of the city. And when we go out and we secure funding for a public building, I want to make sure that we have the money to build the building that we promised the people, for the purpose that we promised the people. And if we have, within that budget, the ability to do one percent, then I support the one percent. But I don't support, and I won't support, not knowing what that final budget is, and allocating one percent, and then having to reduce the functionality of the building that the voters voted on, finding ourselves into a budget dilemma. So, the way it's structured here is that we won't know until we have the construction dollars defined, what we calculate the one percent on. Is it the engineer's estimate? Is it a construction cost estimate, or is it the final bid document? And I think that's part of our responsibility to make sure we deliver the product to the people. In terms of final responsibility and the decision-making that was addressed, in my case, I would certainly defer to the Arts Commission, probably ninety-nine percent of the time. But as a councillor, I still have that responsibility to deliver that to the community. And so, I would support the revised ordinance the way it's drafted, because, not that I want to interfere with the Arts Commission, but I want to make sure that, one, we have the ability to build what we promised the people and what the people voted on, and, two, that we deliver those things in a way that meets the overall objectives of the city.
Okay, if there's, I know there's some councillors that are not in support of this ordinance, so, council, I mean, you can, if you don't, I mean, do you want this ordinance brought back or not? You can make a motion if you don't want it brought back, and it just dies from there.
I want it brought back, yeah.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to see it kept as the original one percent, the way it's written, because I think it's a valid choice of funding, for all the reasons that have already been, already been discussed, and since we already have a ten percent contingency factor built into the bidding process that we have, I think it would be totally unrealistic to believe that we don't have enough room in that to allow for what the one percent was part of to begin with.
So, I mean, if there's a majority of not bringing this ordinance back, you can make a motion for that.
I move that we remove this ordinance from consideration and bring it back as the original, or leave it, just leave the ordinance as an original, as it was originally written. However, you want to structure that in...
That's adequate.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
So, a motion's been made to re, to remove this ordinance from, from consideration, which would keep the existing ordinance as is, right? Okay, and there's a second. Is there a discussion on that motion?
Yes.
Okay.
When we went out to the public, when we were, when the safety committee came back, we told them that we were not going to make a Taj Mahal. I don't think there is enough money in that one percent to make a Taj Mahal, but even if there was, we have a responsibility to the people that we told we were not going to make a Taj Mahal. I think it makes a whole lot of sense to wait until we know what's there. You know, I, I'm, I have a hard time looking my constituent in the eye and saying, "You know, we don't have to do this, and we're going to cut back on the functionality of what we build so that we can have this money dedicated to something that doesn't do the job of the building to begin with." Or, we're going to reach in their pocket further and take more money. I, you know, I have a problem with that. I want to wait until we're finished with the functionality of the building before we start adding the things. Well, art is nice. It is not mandatory.
That may be true, I believe it is essential to the well-being of the community.
Well, nobody died because art didn't happen. People die because they die of fire, or being shot, or whatever. I want to have the functionality first, and then we do the art stuff. Now, I've been involved in three art things in, in this city that were privately funded. Now, I don't know, you could probably call that titanium time capsule a piece of art. If you look at it, it probably is. It certainly is from the perspective of people who are in metallurgy. I mean, there's the, the flag on the outside, there's, you know, all done by, it's not like we have a dearth of art, as the folks who, who came here point out. We have these things going on and on, rotating, and that's wonderful. Functionality first, and after functionality, then get to the stuff that's nice.
But by the same token, we're building a new facility, two new facilities, that are going to be dramatically improved, better, enlarged, built for, to last many, many, many years. I cannot honestly fathom that one percent with the ten percent contingency factor we got built in will make an absolute whit of difference on any functionality for that overall planning process that we've got in place, but that's just my view.
We've already used a bunch of said contingency. I mean, it's not like, and we're only at, working up to sixty percent. We're not there yet. We don't know.
Bessie?
I won't be voting for the, for this motion that's on there now, but I will say that I have been doing a lot of thinking about it, and after talking to the two chiefs about what they plan, and that how seldom it happens, I've had, been kind of arguing with myself as to what to, you know, what to, so, this'll give us another, what, two or three weeks, you know, to think about it. But I guess my question is, and maybe there's, how soon do they have to know what they have to spend before, I mean, you know, because if you plan on something, you have to maybe order it, or somebody has to make it, or something like that. So, I'm just wondering, if we wait for the, you know, the engineer's cost, or whoever, does it make any difference, is, is my question? I mean, I don't know enough about how the art comes in. I mean, yeah, I do my own, own painting and stuff like that, you know, so, I do like art, but my question is, is if we wait too long, do we have to settle on some different type of art, or less of an art? You know, I, I don't know the answer to that.
Just, Bessie, to address your question.
Yeah.
The council did direct staff to proceed with the constructions of, of the buildings, and not to include the, the extra features, as it were, that might have been included as art in the, I believe it was a drainage system for the police department, and an expansion of the exhibition area in the fire station. But that doesn't preclude the art from being, or from having art, and the full one percent being included in the final project. Our need was to go ahead and, and the only reason I had asked for that clarification was the need for us to get the project done, which is my, you know, that's what you've charged me really with doing, is to make sure that that happens. So, so, we're make, we're moving along that path. Our hope is, is that we'll have the projects done on time, within budget, and be able to accommodate the one percent art requirement, if that's what the council decides.
That helps a little bit, because I've gotten a lot of emails and, and calls on this issue, and so, yeah, I appreciate it.
All right, there's a motion, and that is to remove the ordinance from consideration, keep the ordinance as is. Any more comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, roll call.
Olson?
Yes.
Collins?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Callum?
No.
Kupczynski?
Yes.
Coburn?
Yes.
It's three to three.
Okay, and I gladly vote, um, vote yes on this, so, okay, so, motion does carry. So, the art ordinance will be kept as is, and will not be coming back for, for a second reading on that. Okay? All right? Thank you, folks.
Mayor, I would, I would request that staff would identify for us, at the time of the construction documents or bid, assess the, the total bid costs, and, and inform council of whether we're within budget, and if we are, that's fine, but if we are pushing our budget, and if the one percent takes us over our projected twenty-four million, I think it was twenty-four or twenty-four and change million, then we know that, because some discussions with the chief have said that based upon the preliminary estimates, they've already had to sacrifice some of the performance requirements of those buildings. And I cannot sacrifice the delivery of police and fire services, where we could perhaps come up with money from a, from a different source to add to that. I think we're going to be in trouble with the voters on not being able to deliver what we said we're going to deliver, and if we come in and come in over budget, we're going to be severely criticized. So, I would just ask, at the time that the bid documents are here, that we be able to delineate the total cost and whether the one percent pushes us over our projected budget.
The council obviously will be kept apprised of the estimates as they come in. I think we're just expecting the sixty percent estimates here in the near future, but you will certainly be apprised of, you know, as, as we get the information.
Bill?
I respect your, your position, Floyd. There's another way to look at this. There's an awful lot of rules, regulations, ordinances, laws, codes, I mean, goes on and on and on, that are required when you build a building. This was just one of them. Certainly was there in place when we knew we were going to build these stations, certainly knew those were in place when the voters voted on it. Nothing has really changed.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
I agree.
Thank you, folks, so. All right, next on the agenda is adoption of resolutions, and this is over transportation project list, and I see we have Mr. Irish here. Was there anything that you wanted to state? Are you just here for a question, or? Go ahead and come forward. This is a resolution that's on page twelve, council.
I'm primarily here for questions. I think we've talked about the project, these changes at numerous times in the past, over the past several months, and this is the resolutions that fully implement them, and if you have remaining questions, I'm, I'm here to answer.
Okay, all right, any questions, Ron?
As SDCs and things come in, and we get more and more revenues from some of those other resources, and is that possibly going to affect, allow us to modify this again to make it more palatable, I guess, is the right way to put it?
When you see a lot, intense period of development activity, what happens is the revenue stream into the SDC account increases, and so, there's more money there to spend if you choose to. So, it really doesn't affect your methodology, your project list at all, but it lets you accelerate the, the rate at which you build projects if you want to.
Okay, that's, that's an improvement, yeah.
So, that's an improvement.
Yeah, that's good. Works the opposite also.
It, it worked that way in 2008 as well, the opposite direction.
Okay, council, what would you like to do with item 1A, which is a resolution on page twelve?
Move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. And then you have revising the project list for the transportation system development charges, and this is a resolution that's on page thirty-three.
Move for adoption. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, Ron. All right, council, you've got adoption of consent calendar. You only have a couple items on there, so I'll entertain a motion unless you would like an item pulled off for discussion.
Yeah, I would, now, if I can find my original agenda sheet, here it is. Yeah, the, the minutes on page forty-four.
Okay.
I, yeah, and it says, we're talking about, we're talking about the steelworkers, and it says, "I feel better that the workers know what they're doing." And what I was meaning to say is that it's unfortunate that we have workers there in the plant who don't know what they're doing, as well as the steelworkers who should be there. So, my, I think my statement, and I meant my statement to be a little more definitive than that, so.
So, maybe more like, he feels better knowing...
It's the third paragraph up from the... It's the third paragraph up from the bottom.
Right. So Dick, how about this change? He feels better knowing the steel workers know what they are doing while working in the plant. That be about what you're saying?
That the, I, I feel that the workers know better about what they're doing than the, than the non-union workers that are presently running the plant.
So the steel workers know more, um, what they are doing in the plant?
Than the non-union workers.
Okay, all right. Anything else?
No.
Can I read that back? We'll change it to, he feels better knowing that the steel workers know what they're doing in the plant, better than the non-still workers?
Better than the non-union.
Non-union.
Yeah.
Non-union workers.
Non-union workers.
Wouldn't be non-union steel workers.
Yeah.
Double negative.
Okay, all right, so I'll entertain a motion.
So move that we adopt a consent calendar.
Second.
And there's a second, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Now, um, let's see, award a bid on page 50. And Jeff, is this your item?
Yes, thank you, mayor. So last Thursday, we opened bids for the Vine Street Water Treatment Plan Electrical Improvements. We received five bids for this project, ranging from 585, $707,000, excuse me, to The engineer's estimate was 775,000. Staff is recommending that council award this contract in the amount of 585,707 dollars to the low bidder, U.S. West Electric from Myrtle Creek, Oregon, contingent upon no bid protest being received during the seven-day protest period which ends this Thursday, November 5th. So what's a little bit different with this word memo than others is that we rushed this, this memo into the packet, and normally we have a little bit more time between the council meeting and the bid opening, which allows for that bid protest period to pass. With the way the meetings fall around the holidays, the next meeting being in December, we lose a month, and to complete this work, we have to take the plant down, which we want to do during the winter months or prior to peak summer month, so this affords us the time, more time to get this work done before demands start picking up when the temperatures increase.
Move toward.
Move toward, okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
As requested. Yeah. It, it's nice to see, you know, the bids all coming in lower, which a question, all of a sudden they came in, most of them are relatively close to each other, the four on the right, but this one, the Myrtle Creek one, is, seems to me so dramatically less. Is there a concern there? Especially in comparison to the engineer's estimate, why, I mean, that's a huge difference.
Yeah, I, I'm-
Are they just selling?
Electrical issues I am not familiar with, I'll just be very straightforward with that. I defer to Councilor Coburn. In a, in a, as far as bids go, you know, we get, sometimes we get them nice and tight all together, sometimes we get outliers, sometimes the outliers, when they're the low bidder, can be problematic, and sometimes they're not, it's, it's really, uh-
The former sponsor, we're all good.
The other thing I'd say is that if a bidder, after the bids are open, goes back and says, "Oh, my God, I made a tremendous mistake," they can't apply to be relieved, doesn't mean they will be relieved, they can apply, and I'm assuming we've had no application here to be relieved of the bid.
We have not.
Which is like a confirmation that the low bidder knows what they've done and are prepared to go forward.
Well, and bids realistically, especially when you're, when you're installing something, some people have better deals or know of a better place or, you know, than others when you're buying things. I mean, I, I see things in my industry all the time that, you know, one thing is $2.30 a pound, and the same exact thing with a different name on it is $1.70, simply it's different marketing. There are those things that happen.
So I don't recognize this bidder's name, that U.S. West Electric. Are they new? Is this the first time for us?
Electrical's all new for me.
Yeah.
So little electrical work.
Bill, are they new?
I just don't know.
You might know.
You're putting him in a double bind.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's appropriate for me to even comment. Uh, one thing I want to say, and I'm not speaking specifically to these bid results, but sometimes mistakes are made. I have certainly made mistakes and gotten jobs that it's like, oops, and then you scramble. So Rich is right, sometimes people get better pricing, sometimes mistakes are made. That's not a commentary on what happened here, I have no idea, no insight to this, but it, it is one of the reasons sometimes people are low, and it's like, wow, that seems pretty low.
I was just scared, have you heard of this company before?
I have.
Oh, you have, then, okay, yeah, because that's the first time I've seen it come across our diet.
He wasn't cussing when he said that, so they must be okay.
Well, and one of the other things that it, it imposes generally an extra burden of inspection on public works, if we get a bid that is an outlier low bid, then we're often prudent to manage that contract very carefully to make sure that we are not inundated with change order requests to try to make up for the money that's left on the table.
On a project like this, it's really, folks that work out at Chris's shop that do a lot of inspection on this, and our operations crew, we have some very talented people that deal with these things, know what they're looking at, very different skill set than we have in, in engineering, and certainly not something I possess.
I, I will say this. I'm 99% sure I know who is going to do this work, as he used to be an employee of ours, and he is an excellent electrician, and, and we hated to see him go. He, he left because he wanted more challenges, and this is the kind of thing he's, he's talking about. Now, that's not a guarantee that the individual I'm thinking of is going to do this, but the, the individual I'm thinking of is, is a local individual, and this, this company's out of Myrtle Creek, so I, I have no problems, or no concerns about this, and, you know, I don't have any sour grapes, we were third, that's the way the game's played, so.
Okay, all right, so council, there's a motion toward the bid and a second, more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
I will say that if you read the minutes, when I have a concern about a contractor, I'm not afraid to bring it up, so.
Okay, next is a report, so this would be, I think, kind of directing staff to kind of start the process for renewing our public safety operating levy for the na, the next May election. Wes?
Right, um, I think the council has, is aware that we have been funding a good percentage of the budgets of both our police and fire departments, which of course includes the ambulance service, through a serial levy for the last, I believe it's 15 years now. And we, typically, we have given ourselves a little bit of a leeway in terms of when we go, when we, when we go to the voters for ass, asking for renewal of the levy, in order to ensure that if it doesn't pass the first time, that we have another shot at it prior to the expiration of the levy. So, in order to maintain that practice, we will need to go to the voters in May, this coming May of 2016, to ask for a new five-year serial levy to fund police and fire and ambulance operations. And, you know, I admit these things kind of sneak up on us, or at least in terms of, of when the actual, you know, best date is, but, again, we think the timing is right to do it, and I think voters are certainly aware and accustomed to this request. We would be looking at trying to ask for enough of an increase to try and make up for compression losses that we've realized in, in recent times, but certainly nothing more than that. We're not trying to, you know, increase the, the budgets dramatically.
Okay, all right.
Is that the same date as the school board election?
No, this would be-
Is that next year?
The, the school boards typically are elected, I think, in March. This election would be the primary election, so it will be a crowded election, I mean, you'll have, you know, primary candidates for president in the major offices.
I'd be along against that.
So Wes, in the staff report, it says, "Staff recommends keeping the levy at the same for the next renewal period." Is that different than what I just heard you say, that you have not yet determined a dollar value?
Well, yeah, I think it, it is a little different language at least. The way I would have phrased that is that keeping it so that we realize at least the same amount of revenue, but that may involve a slightly different rate.
But it's going, we, we're, we're looking to help you try and say, yeah, we want to do it on May 16th, you'll get back to us with the more refined information.
Right, you don't have to set the date or the amount as of tonight.
So, but for discussion purposes, if you're looking for the same amount of revenue, that's the 2.506. That's what the existing levy brings in?
I'm going to defer to, yeah, yes, exactly.
So with the increase in our, in our tax base, our taxable assessed value, the actual $1.15 should go down?
That would suggest that, that's correct.
Okay.
Well, but bearing in mind that number is smaller than what we've received in the past though, isn't it? Or is this one?
Well, we've had a decrease in the growth of compression.
Yeah.
I think there was one year where we actually received less money than the prior year in the public safety levy, but it has grown in subsequent years.
Okay, so this is the, this is the peak amount then?
I think so.
Okay.
And this amount is reflective of the impact of compression, which effectively takes away from the total revenue coming in?
Yes, and the current year budget of about $1.4 million has lost to compression.
Total.
In the public safety levy total we got.
Because of the timing of it, in the next series, with the legislation that was passed last session, the impact from the renewal district, that compression related to this will go away, which allows more revenue to flow in to this purpose.
We will still lose money under compression, but you're right, we would lose less.
Less money. The, we would lose, we would not lose that money that's now associated with the renewal of crowds.
Okay, all right.
I'm just wondering, how much larger is our city now than was when we lowered this to $2,506?
Well-
From the original?
Five, ten.
Well, Stuart just told me this, is that this is the peak amount of money that we've ever received, but in terms of what it funds and the, and the service per capita, we're getting less now than what we originally funded, far less.
Well, my point is, if it's a bigger city, shouldn't we stay at the same $1.15 per thousand?
That'd be a choice we have.
That's, that's your choice as policy, Jeff.
And when will we discuss that?
Uh, we can bring that back to you soon as, probably something that we should get to you fairly quickly, because we're going to have to be going to the voters with the request.
So we'll come back to voter.
Yeah.
And that's a lead into my question. Why is that deadline, Stuart, maybe, you know, when do we have to prepare it or marry and go to the county clerk, I guess? Is it like March, or?
It would be, you would need to have your resolution or ordinance sending it to the ballot, prepare it approximately mid-February, we can give you the exact dates next time.
Okay, so we've got a couple months anyway, three months to, to think about it or discuss it.
We've got to discuss it, then we have to prepare it and kind of.
We'll put it back to you the first of the year.
Okay. The forms are due to the county 60 days before the election, but you have, prior to that, you have to allow for two readings from the council and the vetting process and notifications in the papers, so.
Yeah.
Get exact dates for you for next time.
That's close enough.
And I, and I did know, I mean, if we're keeping it at, if it ends up being the same amount, I noticed a couple other levies from other jurisdiction, their ballot title was "Supporting Levy Continuation," they use the word continuation in that, I mean, ballot title, so I think that's helpful too, when it comes to going to the voters, when they know it's more of a renewal, so, but, okay, so council, would you like to, by motion then, um, to give staff to move forward on this?
Yes, for the May 16th primary.
Yeah, mhm.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in a second. Any discussion, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, business from the council, so anything this evening, Bessie?
Uh, just one, a couple comments that, as I go by lows almost every day, they're really making progress by giving, I mean, they've got, I think, pretty much the, the concrete in and, and the planting, the trees and the, and the greenery, so, and also that they've got the signs of beginning to hire, and so, you know, that's a good thing, and then also, um, the Wheeler dealers at the Queen and Geary also have signs that they're starting to hire too. Noticed in the last report that unemployment in Lynn County has gone up again, and so hopefully that these will help, and I'm sure there's other businesses too that are, that are opening and, and maybe expanding, but it's, it's going to be nice to have them open and get some more jobs.
That's all. All right, okay, Bill? You can note, Dick.
Uh, I'm wondering how we're coming with our discussions of levy about the canal?
Just received sort of a counterproposal today, apparently. Got an email from Jeff on it, and we're in reviewing it, and then hopefully that'll be, we can reach agreement on that and have, have that concluded. I don't know, Jeff, did you, you, you haven't had a chance to review?
I have not, no.
So, it's a little early for us to be too optimistic, but the good news is, is that we're, we've had continuous discussion and dialogue, and we seem to be moving in the right direction.
Being, we're getting their stormwater out of our canal?
That's the plan.
Good.
No.
It's funny, sometimes the canal runs clear as a bell, other times it's dark and cloudy, you can't even see the fish in there.
Sometimes it rains and sometimes it doesn't.
I mean, when it hasn't been for years.
It's amazing.
What trepidity is.
Weird, yeah. Okay, anything else, Dick? Okay, all right, Rich?
Um, I guess I, the word outlier, I understand, is just a, something that is outside of the norms of all the rest. It doesn't sound nice. If we could come up with a synonym, it would make my life, make my heart feel better. That's all. Like my work shots. Well, it's one, it's one that's used.
Look it up in your fucking Wagonals and see what's there.
Oh, it's there. That's all.
Okay. Okay, all right, Ray?
I had a conversation with a constituent that said that there was a rumor going around that the city was considering putting parking meters in downtown.
I don't think so.
And I said, and he wanted to know if, if that was true, and I said, nobody has brought that up to, to me at all that I'm aware of. I said, I'd bring it up tonight, I don't think there's been any consideration of doing that, unless it might be from some businesses that want to have, don't want to have, uh, other businesses, people parking in front of their store or something like that, but in general, I haven't heard of any comments about putting parking meters in downtown.
Oh, yeah, no, I, Ron has already accepted the first hundred meters and we're going to be installing them.
We're getting them from the Portland project that was having some issues.
Yeah, the same vendor.
Same vendor.
They charge $2 for 10 minutes, is that, is that all right?
There's been some new kind of striping and lease parking that has taken place, but, you know, Parkwise is the one that, you know, oversees that program, but there's no word of parking meters.
I haven't heard anything about parking meters per se.
No, haven't heard one word of that, so.
I'd like to comment that, I think it was back in 74, that I moved that we take the meters out and see if that helped the downtown, the council went, went along with it. I've still got a couple of meters in my basement if you'd like to have them back.
I remember them as a kid, I remember the meters downtown.
But I'll be opposed to putting them back.
Oh, I know.
Okay, anything else, Ray? Okay, Floyd?
Not tonight, thank you.
Okay, and the only thing I have as a reminder for all of you is Veteran State Parade would be next Wednesday, so look for the trolley over around Jackson area. You can go to that check-in area right on Industrial Way and Queen, and they'll give, give you a number there. If I find out the number before, I'll email all of you and let you know, but try to be there no later than 10:30, probably 10:00, so we can kind of decorate up the trolley, would be great. Okay? So, all right, and that's it, Wes, anything?
I just wanted to commend, since he's not here tonight, commend Jorge for his work in having Albany recognized as the number- in having Albany recognized as the number six digital city in the United States. It was really quite, a pretty good honor, and they looked at a number of different things that we've done with, and these are things that, that the council's been very much involved with, with the project docs, with our transparency initiatives, with our budgeting and expenditures on the website, and with our crimes, our computer statistic analysis. So Chief Latanzio has certainly played a role there. But the leader of that initiative is, has been Jorge from the outset, and he's just done a great job. And, uh, you know, we get a lot of recognition for work that he does.
Great. I know, that is wonderful. He did fantastic jobs. Okay, anything else? Okay, staff, have anything?
I have one comment. I would like to, if, if you ever are interested in recycling those parking meters, we could use them in neighborhoods where people routinely leave their trash carts on the street, blocking parking. I get a complaint about that about every other day. So it'd be nice to have movable parking meters to, you know, you want to leave it on the street?
Oh, that's a good idea.
I don't care.
That idea.
You can fix them up.
So Marilyn, we have the, the work session, so we don't have any other scheduled work session or council meetings for the, um, I mean, the work session for the nine?
Yeah, the work session on Monday, and that's your last meeting this month, other than Kara.
And we have Kara then. Okay, all right. So, um, then our next meeting date would be a work session, November 9th, and then the regular session is not till next month, December 2nd. So, okay?
That's likely to be a long one.
Okay, all right. That would, you're...